And it's for participating in tonight's event. We're proud to be able to offer these opportunities to the community for voters and candidates to engage with one another. As we get started this evening, I would like to note that the chamber does not endorse any candidates for elected office. We simply provide educational opportunities for our members and the community. And now let's jump into outline for this evening's event. Each candidate will be allotted two minutes at the beginning of the program for opening remarks, and one minute at the end of the program for closing remarks. During the question and answer section, candidates will be allotted 60 seconds to respond to the question. Claire has a timer where she'll be keeping track of time and letting you all know when you're getting close. And I think there's a sound or something like that that she'll play. So upon each response, we'll proceed down the line in an order of candidates that you all are sitting in. So to kick off tonight's event, I know we had a couple candidates that weren't able to join us. And so I will let Claire, who is our public affairs specialist at the chamber, read a comment from Lisa Borgin.
Hello, thank you candidates for being here and thank you to the audience for being here tonight. So for the timer, just to clarify that, the screen is a little small, so there will be a sound at the end. And we just ask that when you reach that sound that you wrap up your answers, since we have a lot of questions to get through tonight. And we want to make sure that we're trying to be as timely as possible. And then I do have a statement prepared from Lisa Borgin to read. I'm a lifelong resident of Morehead and have been involved in public service most of my adult life. My husband Brad and I are graduates of Morehead High School, go Spuds. I also have, I also am a graduate of MSUM, go Dragons. We raised our four children in Morehead, our youngest is in ninth grade at Morehead High, and we have two grandchildren living in Morehead. I'm invested in their future and will continue to be a champion for Morehead. Morehead is a fantastic place to live, work, and play. As a city leader, I will work to ensure we have the economic growth and development. Our residents must feel safe, welcome, and included. We are a growing community, one of few in outstate Minnesota. As we continue to grow our diverse and vibrant community, we must offer a variety of housing options and amenities residents desire. I will support these goals as your representative in Ward Three. I would be honored to serve on the Morehead City Council. I appreciate your vote on November 5th, Lisa Borgin.
Great, well, thank you Claire. Now we'll start with candidate opening remarks. And we'll start on the left here and move our way around. So Sebastian, kick us off for two minutes of opening remarks.
Again, my name is Sebastian Dugle, I'm running for city council, Ward Four. Really why I'm trying to run is just want to help guide the city through its next phase of development and growth. I really am focused on affordable housing, public safety, ensuring that, you know, grocery safe while ensuring progress that benefits everybody in the city. I really want to bring a lot of balance to and growth and sustainability and create a future that works well for everyone in the city. I believe citizens should have a complete and trust in our council and have an open door and full transparency to our local government.
Great, thank you. Zach? You just have to hold the three buttons till the ring light comes off.
Okay, my name is Zach Camina, I'm running for city council, Ward Four. I'm a teacher at Morehead High, a lot of people were asking me, why don't you run for school board? This is like a conflict of interest, I can't do that. But I'm very closely working in the community for a Christian American Development Organization. This is the place where I grew and got connected with people and made a lot of good relationships. And attending events and getting connected with people and resources and people come into the office for help. They were raising a lot of questions, so I found out that there are so many things that we can deal with. So in the events, some people approached me and they asked me why I do not run for city council. To be honest, I'm living, I'm still living about things and I'm not an expert, but I'm looking forward to getting to know many things in the city. The city where I came to, this is the first place that I moved to since I immigrated from another country in Middle East. So my priorities are working on affordable housing and making sure that people would love the city. By having a house here, I think that people will love the city. And because people, if they have house, they need to have work also. So another vision is to work on workforce. And my third one is to create like engagement, family engagement and community engagement. After COVID, a lot of things happened, people would rather keep themselves indoors. So we need to work on getting them out and get engaged in the community. Thanks.
Thank you. Nicole?
Just want to say, these are the easiest difficult microphones anywhere, so don't feel bad. Like I struggle with this every month at planning commission. Hi, my name is Nicole Hansen, I'm running for Ward One City Council. I have lived in Morehead since 2007. I did not have the fortune to be born and raised in Morehead, but I got here as soon as I could. I've lived in Ward One for nine years. I'm married with two kids, my older child is student at state, my younger child is a senior at Morehead High School. Right now I work at, for a program called North Dakota F-Score, which works to build, it's a statewide program in North Dakota that builds STEM capacity and participation and increases the STEM workforce in North Dakota. I am the communication specialist there. Before that, I spent almost 10 years as a consultant. I worked with a lot of businesses consulting in marketing and e-commerce. I had clients locally, I had clients in Boston and Switzerland. I worked in little companies and big companies. So I have a fair amount of experience within the business world as well as now working in the, in public education. I have served on more in planning commission for seven years. Three times I have been elected chair. And I think one of the reasons why I have been elected chair that many times, one, I am willing to do the job that no one else wants to do a lot of the time. But also, I am a problem solver and I am a pragmatist. So I try to look at things from multiple points of view and get a lot of different kinds of input from people. I like to make people feel heard. People come to planning commission all the time with problems that we cannot solve for them. But what I want them to leave with is to know that we've heard them out and that we pointed them in a direction of someone who may be able to help them. So that's kind of one reason why I think, what, one thing I could bring to, to city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily?
My name is Emily Moore and I'm running for Ward Two City Council. I was not also born and raised in Morehead, Minnesota. I was actually born and raised in the DC, Maryland and Virginia area. I got here as fast as I could by detour. So I married to the military and after 22 years of service, 11 different duty stations, my husband and I were trying to decide where to settle and raise our family. And the first job offered he had was here in Morehead, Minnesota. And we came to visit and we completely fell in love. So I've been here for 10 years, raised our kids here. I now have a freshman in high school and a freshman in college. And then my background, I was an environmental studies, environmental policy major in college and intern for my congressman, Steny Hoyer, on Capitol Hill at the end of my college career. And from there, I took off and did consulting work for the Department of Defense and then eventually became an Air Force civilian, how I found and fell in love with my husband. So that all led me here, it was meant to be. But I am running for city council. A big part of it is that my son is a police officer. So that has brought to light the importance of our safety here in our community. So that's going to be my number one priority is our public safety. But I'm also interested in infrastructure, our business, and the vibrancy of our community. I love who we are and who we can be through the revitalization of our downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Noel?
Hello, first of all, a huge thank you to the chamber for hosting this candidate forum tonight. And hello to the folks who showed up. It's nice to see so many familiar faces and some new faces as well. I'm Noel Harden and I'm running in Ward Three. I have lived in the Woodland Park neighborhood where I own a home for the last five years with my son Barry, who's a seventh grader at Horizon East, and my partner Chris. I have also worked in Morehead for the last 13 years as an educator with the University of Minnesota Extension. And through that work, I worked locally and around the state, identifying the needs of community with community and doing everything that I can to leverage resources and my expertise to comprehensively address those needs. I would also like to add that before I worked for extension, I co-owned a small business. So we had a business where we butchered chickens for small-scale farmers and homestead families. And through that work of processing thousands of chickens on people's farms, I really learned a lot about how important it is for small business owners to be innovative. We weren't necessarily trying to make a lot of money, but we knew that there's a huge gap in our local and regional food supply chain around bean processing. So that was a service that we really wanted to be able to provide. And then one of the biggest challenges of starting that business was navigating some of the regulations from the Department of Ag. So huge shout out to our small businesses and the work happening in Morehead to support them. My priorities as a city council member are to support families in our community, particularly the most vulnerable. I also am interested in protecting public health and public safety, both of which are large needs in our community. And finally, I'd like to use my expertise in participatory budgeting to be an effective steward of our city budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt?
I'm Matt Gilbertson, I'm the current Ward One council member. I run for reelection for three reasons, public safety, public safety, and redevelopment of downtown. Obviously, we need affordable housing, but we're going to need housing of all kinds. You know, it is MetroCOC studies says more than alone, these 3,700 housing units in Morehead. And there's, you know, multiple ways to get there, but you know, a big believer in tax and financing, rent stuff, so on, for businesses. We need to, you know, our budget is up five, almost 5% because of mostly employee benefits and wages. I own two businesses, small businesses in Morehead, I know what it takes to run a business and how valuable employees are. And the best way to raise, the best way to increase revenue is by increasing personal base, tax base, and residential tax base. You know, it's been a tough budget conversation, I've been in four of them now. It'll necessarily get easier, but it's something that we're committed to. We have the best staff and we want to increase their morale and increase wages and benefits. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Now we're going to dive into the question and answer section this evening, starting with Zach. We're going to dive into workforce here overall, but employers in the region have been facing a shortage of workers with the skills necessary to fill open positions. What do you see as the role of the city council and community partners playing in attracting and retaining workforce to fill these roles? Again, this is a one-minute response. And you can leave the mics on, they will automatically shut off if you're not speaking, so.
Well, I think workforce here is a serious issue, not only here in Morehead and in half the country, but I believe those who love the city, they want to stay here and they want to work here. We do have a privilege that we do have Fargo beside us, that they have more companies that they work with. But we do have so many people actually, also they are talented. In my community, we do have people who have like language barriers or license issues. And we can work, we can closely work with those people. I was one of them actually, I had nine bachelors in another country when I came here. And I went back to school and I got my masters. And at the end of the, like, the last semester, it was kind of like the last minute, I was told that my degree was now working for teaching. And I had to be endorsed by, by the school district in order to get the job, to get licensed. I think we can work closely with the vocational training centers and then the schools in order just to get as many people as possible to get licensed and education for workforce.
Great, thank you. Nicole?
I think that the workforce problem is complicated because there are a limited number of things that, you know, we can do as a city government to help private employers get more employees. Just think that's hard. I think if you pay people or offer more higher wages, you know, you get more people to apply. We can't impact that. What we can do is, there's a couple of reasons why people choose a place to live. One is, can they afford the housing there? So if we can find a way to create more affordable housing, that will make more people want to come here to live and some of them will work in Morehead. And then the other thing is people want to live where it's safe. And we know that we have a public safety issue right now, and I know that city council is working on it. But that's something, that's a problem we need to solve before it gets any bigger. Because once it gets bigger, we're going to, we're going to, it's going to be difficult to get people to want to live in a place where they don't feel safe if we get to that point.
Thank you. Emily?
So I see the role of us would be to communicate, collaborate, and coordinate with every organization that we can find out there to address this issue. For me, that looks like reaching out to Morehead Public Schools. They have a gem of a facility called the Morehead Career Academy, where we can really use those skills that are being taught there and connect them with local businesses and bring in and address that workforce shortage. Two other organizations that come to mind when I think of addressing this challenge would be reaching out to Soma Solutions and Cato, because they both have the capacity or they can leverage their local communities and address the workforce challenges. So that's what I see our role as, as really advocating, coordinating, collaborating, reaching out and doing our best to address it. Thank you.
Thank you. Noel?
Thanks for the question, I think this is a really important issue. And I believe that the city's role is to strategically address limiting factors that prevent our workforce from expanding. We know from a study by MetroCOC that as a region, we have a ratio of 1.5 to 1 as far as jobs to housing units that are available in the community. So this is a huge limitation as far as attracting a competitive workforce to the region. And another issue is affordable childcare. This isn't one that we're alone on, but it's something that absolutely needs to be addressed if we're going to be able to expand our workforce. I also think that for Morehead in particular, part of our challenge with workforce development is a marketing challenge. We have a lot to be proud of as a community and as a state. And we found from talking, for example, with new homeowners in Morehead, that they are attracted to the level of social services and education on this side of the river.
Thank you. Matt?
The workforce is a complicated issue. You know, Fargo's, Greater Fargo-Moore DDC has, and the chamber is working on a new program or a new initiative for workforce development about bringing people in. You know, we all have to kind of be on the same page of what we have to offer. You know, Morehead Career Academy that was mentioned, there's one being built in Fargo. You know, let's work with the other institutions that we have. You know, there's plenty of students that are coming into the area, how do we figure out how to keep them current? You know, when it comes down to housing and childcare, unfortunately, we just lost a daycare center on Highway 10. You know, abruptly, you know, how do we, how do we collaboratively fix those issues? You know, most of us that left want to come back, you know. So how do we get those people to come and how do we get them to stay?
Great, thank you. Sebastian?
I agree, I think we'll be last, I can take this, okay, everybody. I agree with what a lot of other individuals have said. I agree, we need to really market the heck out of what we have here. I think a while back, I had talked with the president of MSUM. A lot of what he says, what they do for current marketing to get students here. So they say, hey, come live here, go to school in Morehead. And we have a lot of stuff you can do over in Fargo. I think with all the projects and all the new amenities that we're currently doing now with the community centers and library, all the new parks that are coming through, the new swimming pool, really again, kind of like what Emily said, is market the heck out of everything. So hey, we have those tools now and that's exactly what the president from MSUM said is hey, you're giving us tools to market through here. And I think that'll eventually drive our workforce up.
Great, thank you. Staying on the same vein as workforce, just diving a little bit deeper as mentioned before, but childcare. Families in Morehead and the across Minnesota are struggling to access childcare services. This lack of childcare is a large barrier for working families looking to return or stay in the workforce. What tools does the city have, the city council have to address this issue? And how would you go about using these? And this one, we'll start with Nicole.
I would love to tell you that I have a solution to the childcare problem in America and I do know. I don't actually know what we can do that we aren't already doing as a city. What I do know is, I do think that there is a role for the state legislature to play in this. And that is where I have some, I have relationships with both Representative Keeler and Senator Kupac that are, I would say, let me just say what the relationships are. I'm Heather Keeler's CFP manager, I have been since she started running. I am the one who recruited Senator Kupac into this race, into, into running for senate. So I have close personal relationships with both of them, which means I have a way into getting us into those legislative conversations about getting more help with childcare and those, you know, other things that I don't think anyone else has. I don't have, I don't, I think we need the state's help on this, I don't think we can do it.
Great, thank you. Emily?
Yeah, I am going to echo what Nicole said and also say that my heart goes out to the families that don't have childcare right now. I can tell you as a full-time working Air Force employee with my husband deployed in Iraq, I faced this challenge myself. And it was, it's really hard to talk to someone over Skype in a war zone and tell them that you don't know where your kid's going to go to daycare the next day. And so based on that, I can tell you that my heart is in this and I'm going to work to find solutions. I will work and collaborate with anyone and everyone I can. I think it is state, federal, local, we got to look everywhere. The one thing I do know that we have would be the county loan for the $3,500 to start new businesses. So I know that that is out there, but beyond that, right now, I think we're, we're going to be reaching. Thank you.
Thank you. Noel?
Like Emily, this is definitely a personal issue to me. When I first moved to Morehead, I was a single parent. And if it were not for having a job where I have flexibility and I'm able to work from home, I honestly don't know how I would have gotten through that. I also know I have a friend in town who runs a home-based childcare and she's in the process of looking for a different job, frankly, and planning to end her operation. And part of it is because of the amount of regulations that exist for childcares. So I agree with Nicole and her point about, you know, we need to try to find ways to work at the state level around this issue. I also am really interested in our incentive structure as a city and how we can have incentives that are more tailored for the kinds of businesses like childcare facilities that fill vital community needs.
Great, thank you. Matt?
I'm blessed, my three children are 19 and above, so I don't deal with this anymore. But we have family, you know, we have a family daycare that our kids went to. And I see the county out here, maybe we defer to the county? No, just kidding. Oh, I think we have to just, you know, kind of, I agree, it's a regulation. Seems that the regulations are stronger in Minnesota than they are in North Dakota, it would be a first place to start. And I think we just look at, you know, if somebody wants to start a daycare or expand, you know, can we look at the West Central Initiative Fund? That's up to $50,000 for small business. Those are small businesses, you know, I think, look at all options and just take them.
Great, thank you. Sebastian?
A little good question for me. My wife has been doing daycares for 22 years out of the house. As a city, to help daycare, I kind of what everyone else is talking about now, find ways to, hey, if we can give them funds to start a business, great. Moreover, though, it's, it is truly the regulation packet that just came out. It used to be 21 pages long, now it's 98 pages deep. Some of that is a little ridiculous, like if a bug flies into your house, that's documented. Put mitigation process in and find ways so it never happen again. That's in the packet. That's just not, you know, feasible for anybody to do, things happen, it's life. To have that stricter regulation is kind of crazy. And I think that's literally what's pushing most home daycares out. I think just before daycare, there was what roughly 19,000, I remember. And I think maybe now there's 6,000 home daycares now in state. So that's, I think the overregulations was pushing a lot of people up, they don't know what to expect.
Great, thank you. Zach?
I think, I think this one is, is kind of like a business, if you, if you look at it just like a business. Businesses here in Minnesota, you know, it's, it's very complicated. Like there are a lot of regulations and childcare is one of them. So reducing regulations would be one of the solutions, but I don't know how much the city can do that. Maybe they can coordinate with the city, with the state and discuss this issue. Because I don't know, a lot of community members, they do, they do work in Fargo instead. So we all are saying that this is the best place to live, but how can we bring our businesses back here? It looks like, I mean, I'm, I'm living with the simple people and people in the community. They all say that it's really hard to, to have, to fund a business here because of the regulations.
Great, thank you. Talking about another barrier workforce, and it was mentioned a few times as well, is housing. And then this specific MetroCOC study was also mentioned about that our region in the next 10 years needs about 16,000 housing units. A diversified stock of housing and a high rate of homeownership and a regional approach to tackle our housing challenge. As a council member, what is, what role do you see yourself playing in addressing the findings of this study and helping address this housing shortage in our region? For this one, we'll start with Emily.
I think you're the question. Um, I, just to start out, it's 3,700 for Morehead specifically, rather than looking at 16,000. That just feels a little bit overwhelming to think about. But in particular, I think we need to focus on the families, pardon me, in that 80K range. Because the MetroCOC study found that that is the, the income that we're looking at trying to get out of apartments and into houses. So I think that if we focus on building new homes that are affordable, I also see the, like, I'm, I'm a proponent of higher density housing and, yep. Okay.
Great, Nicole?
Well, again, I really appreciate this question. I grew up living around the country a lot and my family struggled with housing security, with food security. And I know that this is an issue that many people in our community might be one financial disaster away from struggling with those issues as well. So again, referencing the FM Housing Study, we need to have the right kind of housing. We are not incentivizing the right kind of housing at the moment. The cost of new homes being built in the region greatly exceed what your average family in town can afford. So I think that's a real strong area for potential improvement. And again, to look at our incentive structure, we also know that we need more of those kind of medium-density developments that have between two and nine units as well. And we need to look at the fact that so many of our renters are cost burdened and paying more than 30% of their income on housing.
Great, thank you. Matt?
Well, when it comes down to housing, we need to keep the, you know, two-year tax payment on new housing. Maybe look at ways to expand that. And we've got, also have to look at the policies and regulations in the state of Minnesota. See if we can get their counterparts in the state to kind of relieve, you know, decrease some of those regulations. You know, 3,700 or 3900 housing units a lot in the next 10 years. We've got a place on itself in Morehead that, you know, 40% was affordable and 60% of the market was one of the fastest rate-built apartment buildings that they've had. You know, and we did that with tax and financing. So it's going to take all of us to build that house and get 1,000 in outdoor infill units, lots and more that we can start working on.
Thank you. Sebastian?
Really, to go right along with Matt, we need to use every tool we have on our toolbox to try to work with our developers as best as we can. Whatever it is, be it state, whatever type of funding and flexibility we can have, work with the individuals to rezone some areas if we need to within the city. I know there's a few projects looking at. I know there's a few projects looking at right now being possible rezoned. As much as we can do to entice developers to keep coming and utilize our open areas that we have, I think is gonna be our, our best option, show it, show and be as flexible as we possibly can.
Great, thank you.
I think, I think one of them, amending zoning law, maybe working with the state or the city if they have power, because there are some families that are satisfied with having a small unit to live in. It has to be then in a, in a way that, that, that does not change the city in a bad way. But probably, I mean, ending the zoning law would be one of the solutions. And giving two-year tax break, maybe working with the state would be great ideas.
Great, thank you. Nicole?
I am also for increasing our housing density a little bit. There are, there's a vacant lot in my neighborhood that is zoned for a single-family home. You could easily fit a triplex on that space. And, you know, the only cost to the neighborhood would really be there, might be in a couple of extra cars. That would generate more tax revenue from that piece of land and it would also be more places for people to live. So that's the kind of, when we talk about density, I'm not just talking about building big apartment buildings, which, I mean, we're also gonna need someone with two. But looking at places where, where we can increase within a neighborhood that already exists, how do we get a little bit more housing within that neighborhood? That is, I think, one way to do it. I'm just gonna stop there because my attention.
Great, thank you. Now diving a little bit into economic development, there's a couple of different questions that I'll ask here. And for this one, we'll start with Nicole. But Morehead is in a unique position as a border community, which brings both challenges and opportunities. In your perspective, what are some of the largest challenges caused by this and how will you work to address them?
Such an important question. I think one of the challenges that I hear about is honestly misperception. I think a lot of people in the community don't understand that we get a lot of support to offset some of the challenges that we have as far as tax rates and the differences between the two states in that arena. So I think that part of the work that I'm doing, talking to people on their doorstep, is educating folks that we do have programs in place that help us be competitive with our neighbor. And sure, those may not be fully addressing the issue and there might be some other strategies that we could pursue in that arena. But again, I also think that Morehead should be proud of the things that make us competitive within the region. One thing I hear about is that people can come across the border and have a little bit more freedom in Morehead. They can get universal meals for their kids in the school, paid family and medical leave. So I think we should be bold about promoting the strengths that we do have.
Thank you. Matt?
Well, as a business owner, I can tell you the challenges are real. But with the, with the work comp and the work and everybody's own credit, it's a soft and some. It just comes down to, you know, people have businesses in Morehead because they wanna have businesses in Morehead. Then it comes down to, then let's get more, like especially with downtown. Bring up over a thousand housing units, then the businesses, get the people down there, then the businesses. It's gonna take us a while to overcome the Family Medical Leave Act, because that's a cost right up front. And hopefully it will bring more employees over for that benefit. But I guess time will tell on that, but, you know, it just comes down to promoting businesses within Morehead.
Great, thank you. Sebastian?
I think right now, a lot of it is game perception. But I think we need to weigh the pros and cons on each side. They end up being kind of washed in that way. I think right now, we currently have a lot of great programs to really bring a lot of businesses over here. And with the whole downtown redevelopment process, the development going on, there's a lot of opportunity that's gonna happen over there. Even if you're thinking more industrialized size, the MaKera Edition down in South Morehead is like one of the largest shovel-ready sites that we have in Minnesota. And it's right here in Morehead. I think we're getting a lot more recognition from St. Paul as being one of the second-largest urban areas in the state. So they're recognizing that too and helping us out with a lot of federal funding and whatnot. So I think we just need to keep, need to keep, you know, accessing that and referencing those tools that we have.
Thank you. Zach?
Well, the, the good thing about having Fargo in order to, with our neighbors is that we do have more working opportunities so our people can go there and find the job that they like or the, the job that they can make more money out of it. But the challenge is they take our revenue. So this can be, this can be solved actually by probably having more businesses. I'm, I'm just hoping that after the downtown project is done, we will have more businesses coming over. So our people can work in there and we can keep our revenues staying in the city.
Great, thank you. Nicole?
Please repeat the question, please.
Yes, Morehead is uniquely positioned as a border community, which brings both challenges and opportunities. In your perspective, what is the largest challenge caused by this and how will you work to address it?
Things are so hard to work, you guys don't even know.
So elected, you're gonna, first thing you're gonna do is change the microphone.
I'm sorry, Claire, I didn't wanna start till you're ready.
I'm ready, ready when you are.
I'm gonna start actually answering the question. I, I have a couple of things to say that don't directly answer the question. Number one is, my personal point of view is, there is always room to reevaluate regulations, always, I think. However, if I wanted to live by North Dakota regulations, I would live in North Dakota. And I feel like a lot of people feel that way and that's one reason why we choose to live here. So I don't want to make Morehead more Fargo. That is not the solution in my mind to the problem. The other thing, I just wanna mention, Sebastian had said something about we're getting more recognition from St. Paul. And I, I agree with that, but I wanna say that didn't just happen. That was a lot of work on the part of a lot of people and, and at least one of the people is in this room, but other people who aren't. That, that is advocacy on our behalf, particularly I gotta shout out Heather Keeler again. She worked so hard to get them to pay attention to us. And she's not always caught, like chilled about it, but it works.
Great, thank you. Emily?
I feel so I should echo everything that I've heard so far. But obviously, border state legislation is really important for us here in Morehead. Being the number one fastest growing community outside of the Twin Cities in Minnesota. So, and we have our big competitor right in Crest River, we need that. And we have great staff here doing the work. And I would love to be on a Legislative Affairs group on the council and, and work aligned, aligned with them on that work to continue making that happen.
Great, thank you. Sticking in the same vein, diving a little bit more into the business aspect of it. What is your view on using incentives to attract and retain businesses to Morehead? We'll start this one with Matt. And I'm happy to repeat any questions as we go through, we mentioned something earlier, sorry.
Do you guys, you guys spend money to make money? Looking downtown, nineteen acres of value, twenty million taxable value. Two buildings being built right now, the East Parking Lot is thirty to forty million value. The library itself is forty-one million. You know, that's the public aspect of the redevelopment downtown. City Hall is gonna be fifteen to twenty million dollar renovation. You know, that was done by taxing and financing and sales tax. We do this right, and that's what I wanna be reelected, is to make sure we do this right, we have one chance. When it's all said and done, there'll be another nine multi-unit buildings and the total value be five hundred million dollars.
Great, thank you. Sebastian? What is your view on using incentives to attract and retain businesses to Morehead?
I completely agree with what Matt said. Again, I feel like broke, broken record here saying, use every toolbox we need to, or every tool in the toolbox to attract as many businesses as we can. I think that's been something that we've been lacking for quite a while. Why that is, I don't know. It's, I was talking with a gentleman the other day, it's like, when you're in South Morehead, how many restaurants do you have to go to keep? Four, five, six, maybe tops? That's kinda crazy for a town our size where we have to go to Fargo every single time to do most of the things we wanna do. But I think we need to be aggressive and try to use everything we can to get businesses here. I know Derek Strug is doing a great job and I know we have to do it all strategically. You just can't add just any businesses right away because they're never gonna succeed. But do it in a smart strategic way, that's the best way I can look at it.
Great, thank you.
I think it's good for a short period of time to motivate the businesses by giving them incentives. But it, it should not be like a trend for everyone because they're gonna be like expecting more and more and they're gonna rely on like spending a lot of money in order they can stay here. So we want them to be independent and relying on themselves. But absolutely, I mean, this is a great tool, especially for small businesses. And especially for those who are living here, but they do have businesses outside of the boundary, so, yeah.
Great, thank you.
I voted for the tax, you know, for my financing project down by the apartment building by, off of Ninety-four and East Street. I'm not opposed to using incentives to attract and retain businesses. But if we're gonna do that, we need to be honest with people about what the cost is to the community. So if we, that taxing, that building isn't going to generate property taxes for a long time. But there's a lot of people living there who perhaps are going to receive, you know, protection from the fire department, from the police department, you know, other city services. And we're not, we're not getting property tax to pay for those things. So, so the rest of us are gonna pay more property taxes because we gave that incentive to that building. That's okay, but we need to just be transparent with people that there is a cost to everyone else when we give those kinds of incentives to businesses. And we need to make sure we're being good stewards of the taxpayer's dollars when we're making, giving those incentives.
Great, thank you. Emily?
I'm a fan of this proposal or of keeping this in place for our new businesses, to bring in new business, keep new business, maintain new business. And the reason for that is because I have worked for a small business and I've seen how much initial capital it takes to start a new business. I was there at the beginning and our revenue was two hundred thousand dollars. By the time I left there, after six years, we were bringing in a million dollars in revenue. So it takes time to build and grow a business. And during that initial investment time, that's when you need a break. And that's when they're gonna get the break and then we'll have that business in the future. So I'm a fan.
Great, thank you. Well?
I would like to state for the record that I am a nerd. I think it's hard to work for the University of Minnesota. But I really enjoyed being in Citizens Academy and learning from Derek about our current incentive structure. I also wanna see more data about how well our current structure is working to retain businesses in the long term and to examine what the trade-offs are, which Nicole really well articulated, around how are we able to pay for our services that are needed and how does our incentive structure affect that? I also know that, you know, there are buildings in Morehead that sit empty for a really long time. Meanwhile, I've talked with small business folks, in particular a mental health provider, who can't find the kind of small office space that she needs to start her business. So I think it's really about having the right tool for the job and making sure that we're strategic in how we use incentives.
Great, thank you. Staying somewhat in the same vein, but maybe it has been talked about a little bit too already, but it's taxes. So do you believe that Minnesota and Morehead have a balanced tax system for businesses to operate in? And what role do you see the commission playing in improving or retaining the tax climate in Minnesota? For Morehead, so we'll start with Sebastian.
I think everything is as fair as it can be. I mean, I don't know, I've never been asked that question before, it's hard for me to, I'd have to do, actually, for me to be gone, do more research on that to learn a little bit more on what tools we would have to be able to work on that and how to address it from there. Yeah, sorry.
Yes, do you believe Minnesota has a balanced tax system for businesses to operate in? And what role do you see the, the council playing in improving or maintaining this climate?
Well, to be honest, I don't know, but I think there's something golf. That's why our businesses are not sticking here and they go to different places. And I have to find out, actually. That's why I'm saying that we have to work with the state and with the, maybe with the federal government also on that why we do have like this tax and why businesses are immigrating to other places. I'm not sure and we have to find out.
Thank you. Nicole?
Also not an expert in business taxes. There is one tax issue I did wanna talk about, though. I, I, so when the cannabis market opens in Minnesota, the state has, is going to add a ten percent cannabis sales tax on every, on retail purchases, which we'll have to collect. But then what we get back of that, from that is gonna essentially be like one percent of, of the sales tax revenue. It comes down to, it's gonna, I was hoping that, I was gonna say, let's use the cannabis sales tax revenue to fund our public safety needs to get us kinda caught up to where we need to be. But I looked at it and the Minnesota, Minnesota is gonna keep most of that money. And I don't think that's fair and I don't think that we should, I think we should push back on that and try to get more of that money back here.
Thank you.
I'm gonna echo everybody else's answer. I am not an expert on business taxes, so I, I have a lot to learn. Thanks.
Can you clarify, was the question specific to business taxes or taxes in general?
Business taxes.
So, one, one thing that I've heard, talking with both residents and business owners, is that people want more services in Morehead. In particular, I hear a lot about public safety, how we're understaffed in those departments. And even someone asked me the other night, why can't we have another like small police station in my neighborhood? So at the same time, no one's clamoring up and down to have their taxes increased, whether they're businesses or property owners. So I think the easy answer is that we need more money, right? We need that higher thirty percent commercial and industrial tax base would be really helpful. I also think that giving people more of a voice in our city budgeting process, in our incentive structure, goes a long way to accomplish two things. Make people feel like they have input on those decisions and help people understand why we need to have the taxes that we do to pay for services.
Great, thank you. Matt?
So the commercial tax base is capped at one point six percent. So when we raise our, we go on four point nine percent, what are we end up doing on a budget standpoint? Commercial property tax is capped. That's probably the best thing we have going for us. I don't know what that relates to, I never looked at commercial tax in Fargo. When we bought the house in ninety-eight, we looked at presidential tax, it was cheaper in Morehead. As a homestead credit, seems to be decreasing over time. But I mean, it comes down to, you know, big taxes higher, the corporate tax is gonna be higher. You know, most farmers I talked to would rather have farm on the other side of the river. You know, a lot of that stuff, the state involvement. Unfortunately, all of, the only thing that would really control is property tax. All of our sales tax and the cannabis tax was the state and then we get, we get a kickback in the, in the state and we get from the state.
Thank you. Now shifting gears over to infrastructure. Obviously, there's a lot going on throughout our region, a lot going on through Morehead when it comes to infrastructure. Obviously, there's some great projects happening underway. And so just diving a little bit deeper into one specific infrastructure project, water infrastructure, is the flood mitigation. And so I know we've worked closely with the city and the county and other folks to help advocate in the state legislature for funding for the flood mitigation. Ultimately, the last session was not obtained. But what role do you see the commission playing in developing adequate flood, flood protection moving forward? Maybe talk a little bit more about working with the legislature. This one, we'll start with Zach.
Anything like, it's kind of like in the public service category. So the city can be working, I mean, hand in hand with everyone to make sure that we will have everything's good for our citizens. And even if it is at the cost of the citizens budget, I mean, because it eventually goes to, to the citizens. If it is out of tax, I mean, we, and the citizen will understand about these things. And they can work with the, with the state and also in so why is something that is part of public service that everybody needs to have and clean water? And also that making sure that it's safe, there's no flood. Thank you.
Cool.
Are we talking about diversion project?
Either the flood mitigation project, the income flood mitigation. So I know that there's, it's a part of the diversion project overall, but there's some things specifically happening for Morehead.
I guess I'm, I'm only familiar with the aspects of the diversion project. I have been, that, that the legislature has been asked to fund from, from our side. I believe I know why that didn't happen and I don't want to misspeak and say something that turns out not to be accurate. So the question is hard for me to answer because I don't want to say more than I should. But if anyone can work with the legislature on this, I can do that. And I feel like I should leave it at that.
Great, thank you. Come on.
I guess I wanted to start by thanking our fabulous fearless leader, Mayor Shelley Carverson and the work she has done on this. And say that I would be on board, working with her to continue to move it forward. And I think that she's done a great job so far and I'd love to be part of her team.
Great, thank you. Well.
I will echo what others have said and that we should continue, of course, trying to work with the state around this. And this isn't the kind of thing that we can fund completely on our own. And it's fair, given our history as a community of flooding, to be continuing to ask for support around this. I also think it's really important to think about long range planning for climate resilience when it comes to flooding and when it comes to potential other hazards that we, let's face it, the climate's changing and we're going to see increased impacts from that. We're going to see and we are already seeing more extreme weather events, more extreme rainfall events. So I was proud to be a member of the resilient Morehead Steering Committee that was looking at the impacts of climate change. I'm proud that we've done work around changing what we planned in Morehead and other ways of mitigating the flood impacts in the long term.
Great, thank you. Matt?
Well, let's continue to push Lisa Boyes' agenda to get flood mitigation finalized. We keep going back to the study every year to try to finish those little projects. Not sure what you can do, Lisa, when it's all said and done. But we seem to be getting closer now the county needs, you know, the county's got some requests and, and I'll just work with her. Local legislators, it's going to take more than just, you know, Representative Keeler and Senator Cooper to get this done. You know, get majority of them on board to keep, keep listening to their thoughts and, you know, finalize the flood mitigations. We can move on to bigger and better things.
Thank you, Sebastian.
I think I stole my thunder on that one. I know it's a pretty issue that these citizens who have been working tirelessly down with St. Paul to get this funding down for the diversion project. And I know we're so close, I want to say twenty-nine million, I think, or something is what we need. I'm probably running that number, but we're that close to having all our funding done on our side for the diversion project. And I know there was no bonding issues, bills or anything really done this last legislative session. So that's what really put a guy bust on it. And just keep raising it and keep trying to keep hammering it out until we get it finished. We're, we're, we're that close to the finish line, so.
Great, thank you. Again, switching, shifting gears here a little bit. Talking a little bit more about law enforcement and emergency response. Workforce shortages have significantly impacted emergency responders. And what role do you see the city council playing in attracting and retaining workers to fill these roles specifically? We'll start with Nicole.
I think we have to pay people more. I think it's mostly that simple is we have to pay people more. I, my understanding is that our fire department, the wages at the fire department are the second lowest in the state of Minnesota. And I, we know there's a problem with retention at the police department and, and the issue seems to be primarily that people can go other places and, and work fewer hours for more money. And so I think this one isn't as complicated as it could be. I think we have to pay people more money and then they will do those jobs.
Thanks, Emily.
Yeah, Nicole answered that question perfectly. So second lowest paid in the state of Minnesota doesn't feel acceptable to me. And according to the police department, seventeen percent underpaid. So if you can go to Black Duck, Minnesota and make more money, then answer a whole lot less calls. That's where some of our folks are going. And I know we're spending over a hundred thousand dollars to train these folks. And so once we have them on board, we want to keep them. So, yes, we need to increase wages.
Great, thank you. Noel?
Well, I'd love to pay everyone more who works for the city of Morehead. I think that's a fantastic idea and that people deserve that. I also know that law enforcement is over half our city budget between police and fire. So that's not going to be an easy case to make if we just focus on increasing wages for police. I think that we also need to take a comprehensive approach to create better working conditions for our police and firefighters. Our folks are stressed out. They have to deal with a lot of issues in the community and sort of get treated like the catchall for all of society's problems. So I would love to see us build on new ideas like the Community Resource Navigator, continue our great work that we're doing around prevention and seeing call numbers go down. But I don't think that this is just going to be as simple as throwing more money at the police department. We need to also be addressing other community needs while we do that.
Great, thank you. Matt?
Yes, we need to increase wages and benefits, but it's also a little more complicated than that. We also have to look at, you know, cheaper to retain somebody than it is to hire somebody. And unfortunately for our police department, we'll get a senator nominated, obviously, I need to get talked. Or, you know, Fargo's got their own in-house training program. You know, I used to, you know, the mayor is working on trying to get something in-house here in the city, in the city of Morehead. And we just authored another two open positions for the police department. You know, filling them is going to be hard, but it's more than just increasing the pay. It's also, you know, like, I still get nervous when I see a cop. You know, even if I'm not doing anything wrong, but just the, you know, depreciation that we need for our fire and our police department.
Great, thank you. Sebastian?
Again, I want to switch spots with Matt. I, I believe you can kind of nail it right on head, like even with our last budget meetings, like you said earlier, you know, that's our number one focus for our budget next year is to be competitive and maybe even then some if we can. But it is also a complicated issue, you know, you have family, work, life compatibilities and balance. That's why a lot of our officers are so stressed. They're, they're putting in overtime and doing a lot of hard work. I come from a family of blue, I, I hear about it all the time. There was and cons about everything, so, you know, whatever we can do to help our EMS people is number one for me.
Great, thank you. That, to be honest, sometimes we think that our businesses are in Fargo and how to bring them back to here. And living in south of Northhead also, I have the same opinion and applying for the same principle that we need to bring what we have available in North to, to south of Northhead also. We don't have stations, we don't have like warehouses there. I know that it's not only increasing their payment, also increasing their staff because that will reduce their amount of their responsibility also. When they respond to a case, they have to move the drag all the way down from north to all the way down to south. And south is growing so crazily. So we need a firehouse and we need maybe more police stations and more staff also that will reduce their, their, their personal struggles.
Great, thank you. Now we're just going to move into kind of the final segment, which is this miscellaneous. So a couple of different things and just really trying to better understand you as a candidate for this office. And so first question, and we'll bounce around to a couple of them within this segment. But when faced with conflicts or differing opinions, what strategies do you use to build coalitions and reach consensus? And for this one, start with Emily?
Um, well, if you know anything about the Enneagram, anyone know anything about Enneagrams? I'm an Enneagram nine, which means I'm the one that wants to do kumbaya with everyone. So I want us to all get along. So it's the, what motivates me, it's my internal motivation is to all get along with each other. So the way that I approach that is to understand and see all sides to get to the root of where their perspective comes from. To understand that somebody else's motivation, to understand what their past experience may have been and has brought them to that place where there would be conflict. So that's how I approach it.
Thank you. Well?
I love this question because bringing people together to work through conflict has pretty much been my entire job for the last thirteen years with extension. I'm a facilitator, I work at the community level across the state on all the easy issues like food insecurity, the opioid epidemic, how we're going to survive climate change. And a lot of other issues where, you know, people kind of walk into a room feeling tense, not sure how the conversation is going to go, knowing that there'll be some disagreement. And I have the skills to work through that because of my background in community facilitation. So I think that Emily made some really good points that it's about getting to know people, really understanding what they value and where we can find common ground as a community. I have a proven track record of being able to work with people across the political spectrum of all different socio-economic status demographics. And I would love to apply those skills on council.
Great, thank you. Matt?
I have no idea what an Enneagram I am.
I can help with that.
But I tell you what, I'm a great listener, I will search out answers, I'm not quick to judge. And I will just sit down and facilitate conversations and figure out, you know, how to come up with an amicable situation, solution.
Great, thank you. Sebastian?
Yeah, I personally, just start as much as we can about both sides and what, what the conflict is. I also believe that everything's up for negotiation. You come to the table, you, as long as each side is willing to compromise, hey, great. Then wait, the solution should rectify itself right away. If not, hey, sometimes you're going to have a bad conversation. Leave, come back to the next conversation and hit it again. I think that's the best thing you can do. Everyone's got to be fair and equitable with the decision that's going to be finally made and outcome that come with it, so.
Great, thank you. Zach?
Well, I'm, I'm a good members and I listen a lot and so I have a good relationship with everyone, I want to get connected with everyone. I want to set aside, when it comes to the community interest, I would set aside like everything, even the political views or, or whatever I have had in my, on my vision. So we, it's okay to change it based on the situation and the time where the people having issues. So they, so we need to work on issues based on the current situation and the time and, and the condition. I'm really easy to work with anybody and to, for a partnership. And I already talked to him, I said, even if I'm not winning the election, I would be the supporter of you.
Great, thank you. Nicole?
I used to, that chair once a month and I'd play the chair of planning commission. And maybe two, three, four times a year, people come in here and they sit over there and then they go to that podium and then yell at me about things I have nothing to do with. And so I have gotten very good at trying to ascertain what is the actual problem? Because people come to that top, you made the effort to come all the way to planning commission and go over there, you have a problem. And so I think that is really, before you can find a solution, you really have to understand what the problem is. And then the other thing about me is I really try to, I, I like to fix things, I like to solve problems. And even if someone called me, lovingly called me a local busybody, which I, I mean, I have to own that because I want to fix it. And even if I personally cannot fix it, I want to help you find this person who can. So that's kind of my way of approaching conflict and consensus.
Great, thank you. Moving to the next question, similar kind of talking about yourself. What perspectives do you believe you will bring to the council? And how will you use that to support Morehead's prosperity? For this one, we'll start with Noel.
So I think that I have some really important and unique perspectives that I would bring to council. We do not have a Department of Public Health at the city, we don't have a Department of Food Resilience. And I think that I really bring a lot of skills in both of those areas and my history of work on a wide range of topics. That would be a huge asset to have in city governance and not something that's already well represented. I also have the perspective of, I won't say busybody, but I like to speak up for issues that I care about in the community. Yes, I am a newcomer to public office and running for office. But I have been actively involved in advocating for issues that I care about, like pollinators, like urban agriculture. And I want other people to be able to have a voice in the issues that they care about as well.
Great, thank you. Matt?
Well, the biggest attribute I bring is from a business owner to the city. And also you can look at my track record for the last almost four years. I didn't come with my own agenda, I'm looking for the best and vote for the majority of my board. And also what's best for the majority of the city of Morehead. You know, I'm not afraid to be the lone vote, no or yes. I just look at it from what's best for the city of Morehead. You know, my family and my wife's family, we're all spuds and raised buds. And, you know, we want, we want ultimately what's best for all residents of the city of Morehead.
Great, thank you. Sebastian?
Again, I feel like the Metwin men, both my wife and my two boys all graduated from Morehead High. Before I was on city council, I was served on park board and more public service for about, say, five and four years respectively. Then last year was pointed to city council and it's just been a great learning experience. And again, I, I look at things as the big picture. I want to do what's best for the entire city as a whole. It's just not selective groups here and there because there's a lot more things to think about than just one group for that group. When you're looking on the city side of it, it's, it affects a lot of people, the decisions you make. And I just want to make sure we do the right decisions strategically for the city.
Great, thank you. Zach?
I think a couple of things, what I'm doing is diversity. I'm the only one who's not born and raised in this country. So I came from Middle East, I was a translator for US Army for about eight years. And I came to America to have a program called SIV Special Region Prisoner. That was for those who were known behalf of Americans. And another thing that's unique about me is probably less supporting public services because I do understand their needs. I am also a teacher at Morehead High and I know that their, their problems are very similar to ours. And working closely with, with the community is another thing because I'm really close to the community members and a social person. Connecting school with workforce is another thing that I have realized that it will and many, many issues relating to, relating to us staying in Morehead and loving the city and having a good work job.
Great, thank you. Nicole?
Um, I, I know, I've done a lot of different kinds of things in this town. And so I know lots of different kinds of people. And sometimes those groups of people don't overlap with each other that much. So, for example, I have done, I did a lot of volunteering with the new American community for a while. I did, I taught, I was a tutor for the ESL program at Morehead Development Basic Ed. And so I know there's not just a new American community, there's the Kurdish community and the Somali community and Burundese and the Liberians. And so I, you know, I have, I have lots of different connections like that. I also know a lot of senior citizens for some reason. I know a lot of people. connections like that. I also know a lot of senior citizens for some reason. I know a lot of people in the business community. I know a lot of city staff, lots of spud parents. So like I said, sometimes those groups overlap and sometimes they don't. It's, and that I think is the, what, the kind of different kind of perspective I would bring.
Great, thank you. Come on.
All right, I'm gonna do something a tiny bit different. I brought this with me today. Um, so when I was in the air force, I earned two civilian service medals. One is a meritorious, uh, medal and the other one is exemplary, exemplary service medal. Um, and it is for the work I did. Um, the first one is for work I did on joint basing, which is a lot of money management and data and herding cats and getting people to work together. And the overall budget for that program was $250 million. And it talks about it here on this medal. The second one I have is during this time, I actually worked and served as a victim advocate and sexual assault response coordinator for the air force installation I worked at. And doing that, I, um, I completed over 2,079 hours of volunteer time. So I want you to know that Emily that you see here has this energy, has this passion, has this drive, has this heart. So that is who I am and that's what I will bring to city council.
Great, thank you. Um, just very quickly, in a couple of words, uh, how would you, um, describe your campaign in two words? Start with Matt on this one.
Two words.
Two words.
Best two words. Um, driven and passionate. That's three words, sorry.
We'll, we'll let that one slide, Sebastian.
Transparent, grabaway. What would be, did I guess?
Exciting and time taking. Nicole?
Determined and clear.
Be too wordy for two words. Um.
There could be a couple options in there if you want, I guess.
Just gonna preface it with, it has been so incredibly inspiring to do this.
Community first.
As we look at, uh, or if you were, uh, elected into this position, uh, what are some of the portfolios? And again, this could be kind of a quick answer, um, but what, what were for portfolios would you want to be a part of? Or for some of those that are already in the council, what portfolios do you have and you want to continue to be a part of them as you're moving forward? And for this one, we'll jump to Sebastian.
Right, and I've, and I've served on park board and everything. I'm currently not on that right now, but I've been part of those programs that we're seeing now of the natural playground, Reimagine Ramke, this, um, swimming pool, all-inclusive playground. All of these things are started, completed, in process, even with the library. It'd be great to be more on that side too, to see it all the way come through to the end of that. And that's kind of another reason why I'm here to run again. It's like, started some of these things, you know, at ground level, like bats and bats and baseball field. That was a ten-year project that never got off the ground and finally we got it off the ground to what we're doing now. So, yeah, I want to see some of these things all the way to the end.
Well, whatever the mayor assigns to me that she finds that I'm good at, I would, I would accept it, but I would really love to stay working with the community. Nicole?
Um, I didn't know anything about planning and zoning when I started on the planning commission and now I'm way into it, like maybe a little too much. So I would be delighted to stay in, in the planning and zoning arena.
Nicole?
There's a phrase in a book called Isaiah that says, send me and wherever I am sent is where I'll be and I will happily serve there.
I agree with that. I love new challenges and working on tough issues. Um, I've been involved with our Cascoade Food Commission since it was created ten years ago. Um, I just want that work to succeed whether or not I'm at the table. Um, I also have a master's degree in agroecology, so issues around land use, our parks department, how can we grow more food for our residents, especially if we needed it in a time of crisis? Um, I don't know if there's going to be a board around this, but I know our new library will have a center for entrepreneurship. And that's something that I'm also really interested in being connected with.
Great, thank you. Matt?
Thanks. I'd just say I'd like to continue on the EDC board that I'm on and also the more in public service.
Um, as you look to the future, uh, of Morehead, what are some of the greatest opportunities, uh, that you see, you know, looking at the next five years? Um, and so for this one, we'll start with Zach.
Uh, I'd like to have my outer business back to here, Niana. I am really eager to see how the new downtown would look like and how people are, are looking at it and, um, how attractive it would be. And I would like also to see our, uh, police services, especially the police and, um, the firefighters, uh, feeling more comfortable than they are now. Nicole?
I'm, I love the downtown project. I think it's a great project. That's one thing. I think it's very exciting that we have, um, coming. I think that, you know, we have an opportunity right now. I think that the national climate is going to get more the way it is than less. And I think North Dakota is going to get more North Dakota and Minnesota is going to get more Minnesota. And I think that we should maybe, we have an opportunity to lean into that rather than running away from that. And I think it's an opportunity we should take. Do you mind repeating the question?
Yeah, just looking at the next five years, what are some of the greatest opportunities, uh, you see for, uh, for the city?
Um, well, I'm really excited about Reimagine Ramke and what that can do to that entire community that's located that area as well as the downtown revitalization. I think once the diversion project is done, that we can also, I have a bunch more space for development as well. So those are just two spaces that I see a lot of great future happenings.
Nicole?
As I see it, this is boom time in Morehead. I think we have a great future ahead of us. I think the challenge is really to not be trapped by the limits of our own imagination. I think that we need to spend our money well, we need to raise our money well, and we really need to build more trust and buy-in not only between our community members and government, but across the community as a whole. So I am really excited to use my expertise, bringing in community into deciding how to use millions of dollars in grants and other budgets to do exactly that and strengthen that relationship between our community and between our decision makers.
Thank you. Matt?
Yeah, the next five years is exciting. We'll be able to go down the numbers through the, against that great train. Um, downtown, I mean, the next, you know, the May Savers of Morehead are gonna be in a shock for the next five years. Um, for us to have lived here more than twenty years, we lived through all the evolve project. They're still living through the Hollyamal project. Um, more housing starts, the last Fargo last year for the first time. Um, future's bright and we all want to be a part of that.
Sebastian?
I agree. Uh, I think right now Morehead is in a fantastic position with, uh, development growth and with the downtown project. This is huge. A lot of opportunities. There's opportunities down south, Morehead, too, and all that, uh, being looked at. Uh, and again, like I said, with the Mac and Air Edition over there for industrial, there's some tremendous growth ability over there as well. So I think things are gonna be looking great for Morehead. It's just a matter of strategically adding everything in. So it's just not overwhelming for the community to, uh, engulf.
Great, thank you. Um, so for the last question of this, uh, section here, and we're close to wrapping up here, um, but wanted to just again, a quick response, um, how would you describe the community of Morehead in a couple of words? In, just a couple of words, um, what describes Morehead to you? And this one we'll, uh, start with Nicole.
Hey, that's not cool. Like, I don't, I don't know. Everybody gets to go after me after I met to already think of some, I love this town. If you gave me five more minutes, I could give you a great answer. But I think one thing that we love about this town is that it is, we have the, uh, amenities of a much larger town than we actually live in, but we still have that kind of small city feel. And that's one thing that I really appreciate about Morehead. And I also love that we really prioritize green space and outdoor living, which doesn't seem like, uh, is a thing we would do in a place this cold, but we do and it's smart and I really love that.
I learned so much about this town knocking on doors. Um, I would say that if I would describe our community, they open doors. They really do. My family outside of this area was very concerned about me knocking on doors and campaigning. And I have let them all know that the doors are opening, the smiles are greeting me and the conversations are happening. It's just, it's a pleasure to be part of this community.
Nicole?
I had more than two words, so I have three. I have inclusion, creativity and resourcefulness.
Uh, city more residents are very resilient and very proud, um, of their community and very, very open.
I think right now it's, for me personally, it's family and a lot of energy right now.
Zach? Well, it's very diverse in, in, uh, in population, but I want to see that in the offices.
Great, thank you. Already, as we come to an end here, just wanna wrap up with, uh, a few closing comments from all of our candidates here. Again, um, just a minute response, uh, for closing comments. Uh, so feel free to talk about anything that we didn't discuss, um, this evening, uh, and kind of just put a nice bow on everything that we've talked about. Um, and so for this one, we'll, we'll start with, uh, Emily for closing comments.
Well, first, thank you so much for hosting this, this evening. It was a pleasure to be here and answer these questions. Um, I am excited to be part of the next city council. I want to save our stronger, more vibrant community for Morehead. I am thrilled with what's happening in our community and I'm on board to continuing that forward movement. We do need to reevaluate what's going on within our safety personnel in our community as a police mom. That's gonna be number one for me. I was endorsed by the firefighters. I'm really proud of that fact. Um, I've also been endorsed by the AFL-CIO and so many be working for the people and the wages and the workers. Um, and if you want to learn more about me, it's www dot moreformorehead dot com. And thanks so much.
You're welcome.
Oh, Emily's gratitude for being here. I'm so grateful that you hosted this forum. Special shout out to the active listeners in the audience. I'm an active listener, so I really appreciate that feedback. Um, I guess one thing that hasn't come up that I'd like to emphasize is I think that you know, we're proud of Morehead. We have some unique assets. We're also in a region where we need to work together. That's work I've been really proud of with the Cascoade Food Partners and Food Commission, where we set, set out a goal ten years ago where residents would have more, um, consistent food policy across the region. And we are succeeding in accomplishing that. And I'm very proud that by bringing elected officials together across the region, that we can discover that we have a lot more to work together on than we do to compete over. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt?
Yeah, thank, thank Jim for putting this on the six-minute video that we did a week or so ago. Uh, thanks for everyone coming to listen to who the candidates are and what they have to say tonight. Um, I think I pretty much covered everything that I stand for. People know what I stand for and, um, I'm sure open with all we started in the last three and a half years. I hope to continue for another four years and be reelected.
Thank you. Sebastian?
Yeah, uh, again, thanks for having us here. Um, really, when I think about city council, I really want us to be open, transparent, accountable for every, all our actions. Um, I want us to be able to take in perspectives on making decisions and keep pushing Morehead to be as good and as great as it can be and do the progress that we all want.
Great, thank you. Well, I would like to thank you for hosting this. Uh, it was a great experience for us. Uh, I was a little bit nervous, actually. You can tell. And I have a funny accent. People, people may say that. I don't speak the language, but, um, uh, so what, what I'd like to say is, um, if I elected, I would, I would love to work, uh, to be able to work on the visions that I have because they, they are not my visions. They are the community visions. So every single one of them was designed based on people's needs and community members and after a lot of discussions and meetings and they were the ones who are, who designed, uh, the actual visions that they have and I'm promoting for them now. And, uh, hopefully if elected, I would, uh, honestly and practically working on them. So, uh, I can serve my community members. Thanks. Great, thank you. Nicole?
I went to college in Massachusetts and it was made very clear to me immediately that I had a funny accent. So I get it. Don't worry about it. We all sound funny depending on where we are. Um, I am a problem solver. I like to fix things. Uh, we are in, we are on a really good trajectory, but there are definitely problems to be fixed. Like, we know we have an issue with public safety. Um, for, you know, we have an issue with enough housing. So those are the kinds of things that based on my experience on planning commission, my experience in working in business, um, my experience in the community, doing lots of kind, different kinds of volunteer work, uh, that I'm able to uh, reach out to different kinds of people, hear different, uh, perspectives on things and then help people come to a consensus and a resolution. So, um, that's why I'm running and, um, I hope I'm able to do that as Morehead City Council member. Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you all again for, uh, joining us, uh, this evening. Uh, just maybe give a round of applause to our candidates here for joining us for this evening. Uh, as, uh, as we inch closer to the election time, uh, just would encourage everybody to, uh, check out our vote FMWF.org, uh, which is a nonprofit or nonpartisan uh, election resource designed to empower local community members with current information on local candidates. Including those here today. Uh, as I was mentioning, we've done some videos as well. So there's some candidate profiles. Um, and so those will be uploaded here, uh, soon along with a recording of tonight's event. Um, I just want to thank our co-host again, uh, the Morehead Business Association and the Building Industry Association of the, um, Red River Valley. Um, as we can move forward, uh, we're going to be hosting a Daleworth City Council Forum next, uh, Tuesday the fifteenth, uh, along with our Cracker Barrel on October twenty-third, uh, which will be over in Daleworth as well. So uh, great opportunities to connect voters with candidates face to face and have some great interactions. Um, Claire, any last minute comments?
Yeah, I want to say thank you to all the candidates for being here and thank you to the audience for attending. We're really grateful and honored to have the opportunity to host this event. Before you leave tonight, if you would like to grab a brochure for Lisa Borgan, they are on the back counter there. And then this recording will be posted on the website coming up and will let all the candidates know. So please share that information with your supporters in the community. And thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you all. Have a great evening.